And members of the bargaining units.
I agree.
All right.
A regular meeting of the Mishwaka Common Council for August through 2020 will please come to order. Before we begin, a couple of items in terms of reminders. We are still subject to Governor Holcomb's Executive Order 2037 with regard to face masks. So those people in attendance here in the chambers are all complying and wearing their face masks. For those of you participating remotely, if you see that one or more of us do not have face masks on, it is also an exception to the governor's executive order. For those of us participating in meetings who are socially distanced as we are, are not subject to that requirement. And if you have ever participated in a meeting in this area and tried to talk through a mask, it's difficult to avoid certain things. So that's why you see us without a mask, but we wore them in and we'll be wearing them out. We'll also be operating under modified procedures consistent with other executive orders from the governor. Members of the public will be asked to place their microphone on mute during the meeting, with the exception of any public hearing. At the appropriate point in the public hearing, I will invite the public to unmute their microphone for purposes of submitting such comments, one person at a time as they wish to make. All persons wishing to make public comments will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. After completing public comments, members of the public will once again be asked to place their microphone on mute. And we thank you for your cooperation with regard to these slightly altered procedures. So with that, we will move into the budge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence in memory over the more than 157,000 Americans who have lost their lives due to COVID-19.
And Governor Kernan, you might want to mention Governor Kernan as well.
Thank you. I've also been reminded by Mr. Mamalenti and Clerk Block that we will also stand in honor of the memory of former South Bend City Mayor, former Lieutenant Governor, former Governor Joe Kernan, who recently passed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, for which it stands. Your honor, in this court, justice and law.
Thank you. Before we move further into the agenda, and sometimes it's difficult to tell what the source of this is, there is a little bit of audio audible feedback that we're receiving. So those of you participating remotely, if you can, double check and confirm that your microphone is on mute. We would appreciate it. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Here.
Mr. Benicki?
Here.
Mr. Hazen? Mr. Hazen?
Here.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Here.
Mr. Emmons?
Here.
Mr. Belovich?
Here.
Mr. Compton?
Here.
Mrs. Volker?
Here.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Here.
All council members are present?
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of July 20, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, then the minutes will stand approved as received from the clerk's office. Petitions, communications, remonstrance, and memorials.
I have several. I have appeal number 2020-38 to the Board of Zoning Appeals in the Mishwaka Common Council. This is a use variance to allow automotive repair in I-1 Light Industrial at 1035 McKinley. This petition is signed by Jerry DeTurk. Appeal number 2020-38 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council and the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is a use variance to allow six-unit senior care facility at 3025 Grape Road. This appeal is signed by Eric Thomas. Appeal number 2020-39 to the Board of Zoning Appeals in the Mishwaka Common Council. A use variance for a four-unit apartment in R-1 Single Family Residential, 539 West Sixth Street. This appeal is signed by Kenneth Estes. Before you forget. Petition number 2020-13 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council, City of Mishwaka, Indiana, and the City Plan Commission. This is a petition to rezone 619 Lincoln Way East. Rezone from R-1 Single Family Residential to C-3 City Center Commercial. Petition number 2020-14 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council, City of Mishwaka, Indiana, and the Mishwaka City Plan Commission. This is to rezone from R-1 Single Family Residential to R-2 Two-Family Residential, 613 West Third Street. And this is signed by Michael Portalese, personal representative for the estate of Antonia Portalese. Petition number 2020-15 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council and the Mishwaka City Plan Commission. This is a PUD amendment to allow assisted living facility the northwest corner of Deer Run Drive and Per Road. This is signed by Richard LaFrie. Petition number 2020-16. This is to the Honorable Members of the Common Council and the Mishwaka City Plan Commission. This is a petition for annexation and zoning classification. This is to annex and adjacent property to be included in subdivision south and east of 1141 and 1241 East 12th Street. This is signed by Abby Thomas. Petition number 2020-17. This is to the Honorable Members of the Common Council and the Mishwaka City Plan Commission. This is Grandview PUD amendment to allow dumpster enclosures in the 25-foot setback only if gate is not visible from Gumwood or State Road 23 Cleveland Road. This is signed by Ryan Rans.
Thank you. This evening, we have no reports of special committees, no ordinances on first reading, or resolutions, nor any ordinances on second reading. So we will now move into privilege of the floor. At this time, members of the public are invited to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor.
Hi, my name is Lisha D. Gerber. I live at 1450 Penn Avenue in Mishwaka, which is part of District 2. I've been a resident of Mishwaka for 20 years and have worked at Mishwaka High School for that long also. I'm committed to Mishwaka and our families. And I would just like to respectfully ask formally for the council on the record for a meeting to discuss an ordinance for having backyard hens in Mishwaka. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council for Mrs. Gerber? Thank you for your -- oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Volker. I'm sorry for that.
That's okay. I just wanted to tell you that I appreciate that you've been to our council meetings over the last couple, maybe a couple of months, and made a point of meeting each of us as individual council men and women. And just want you to know that I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Volker. Other questions? Mrs. Gerber, I echo Mrs. Volker's comments, both with respect to you and your husband. And certainly, we appreciate your passion for this issue and the work that you've done on it. From my standpoint, and I happen to have a copy of the governor's most recent executive order that he issued, we still remain in the throes of a public health emergency. And as we have discussed, you and I, and you and others involved in this process, not only has the governor extended the public health emergency, but he's also extended the other executive orders that ask us as a local governmental entity to focus on essential governmental functions at this point in time. So while we respect your passion and your interaction with us, it continues to be the case that, in my opinion, it's not possible for us to move forward with scheduling the meeting that you want to have at this point in time. So I have promised you, Mr. Compton is the chairman of the Public Health and Safety Committee, has committed to you as well on multiple occasions, that as soon as we feel that it's appropriate to move forward, we will. So I know you get sick of hearing the same thing over and over again, but I'm going to prevail upon your patience and good graces once again to continue to work with us as we try to work through this public health emergency. I promise you, as soon as it is appropriate to conduct those type of meetings, we will. But again, as we have discussed in the past, this is an issue that's going to require more than just a meeting. There is some additional work and some dialogue that needs to take place. And the fact that we don't meet is not as much for the convenience of the council or even you, but it is my strong sense of it that there are going to be multiple residents of the community who want to chime in and be made aware of this. So we want to afford them the opportunity to participate when we're not subject to attendance restrictions in this chamber and don't have to ask people to log in from home, which, as we have found tonight, doesn't always work perfectly. So that's the essence of it, and we'll continue to work with.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. President? Mr. Compton?
To add just a little bit to that, your request has not fallen on deaf ears. We have, I have thought about this, talked to a couple of the council members. Should we move forward? Shouldn't we move forward? Put your shoes on, I'd feel put off. You see other things going on that, why can't we be heard? The other things that are, as I understand it, that are going on are time sensitive. If we don't act on them, they don't happen, they can't happen. And rezoning issues and things of that nature are more time sensitive. And I think that's part of the defining line of what's essential and what isn't. Mr. President, if you could help me with that, I know you made a comment about that. But I thought that was a good point to make as well.
I would agree with Mr. Compton. And it may seem that a rezoning matter has no more urgency attached to it than the issue that you're concerned with. However, it impacts construction cycles and the ability to be able to move forward. For some of the, I know you've heard multiple homeowners come before us with regard to rezonings that are attached and related to the refinancing of their properties, which again, has a certain sense of urgency. So it is not that your issue is unimportant. It just doesn't rise to that time-sensitive level that Mr. Compton mentioned. So again, hopefully, we've been, you know, very definitive this evening that this is not the last time that we'll be considering this issue. Now is just not the time to do so.
I understand, I just wanted to formally put it on the record.
Absolutely, and you have accomplished that very well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak under privilege of the floor? Thank you. Unfinished business.
Yes, Mr. President, we have the reconsideration of proposed ordinance number 2020-17, ordinance number 5697. We need to republish, we had an error in the publication. This is the transfer of funds and additional appropriation for Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Fund in the amount of $427,150. And it's to the local road matching grant fund, an additional appropriation of funds for a local road, bridge and road matching grant fund in the amount of $854,300,000. So this is just a matter of reconsidering so that we have this done properly and it will go to the state, which it should.
All right. Thank you. At this point, given the fact that we've already conducted a second reading and public hearing on this matter, given the technical nature of it, and we received a committee report, I'm going to move ahead with opening this up for any questions or comments from the council. And then, hearing none, I will call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hazen? Mr. Hazen?
That was a yes.
Yes.
The record will reflect that Mr. Hazen has indicated yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yeah.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on reconsideration by 9:00. Thank you very much for your patience.
Kind of you. New business. At this point, we'll move into an update from the administration with regard to COVID-19. And if my memory serves, Chief Thomas is participating remotely. So Chief, if you're here, if you could start out by identifying yourself and provide us with, are still participating remotely, if you could identify yourself and provide us with the update, that would be great.
Yeah, this is Brian Thompson. I'm getting a lot of feedback there. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? We can.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, so it appears that we're kind of at a steady state in our local area. Looking today, where the average positive cases are in the 40s. And they have been for approximately the last week or so, compared to back where we were just one month ago, that we were at an average of 14 cases a day. So concerning where we are over from one month ago, but it appears over the past one week or so that we've kind of leveled off. Unlike Elkert County, though, we have not seen a decline. I know quite a bit of that has been mentioned in the news just today in regards to schools going back. Here, as far as fire department responses to cases, we are seeing about the same. We're seeing about the same average of positive cases or COVID-like symptoms that we are seeing. But we're not seeing a decline. And to follow with the hospitals, they have seen their census increase significantly. And we have seen our run volume increase fairly significantly, especially where we were several months ago, where we were down so much. Now we are up to above-average runs and seeing lots of critical patients, not necessarily COVID-related. Maybe it is in that they weren't seeking the care that they normally would during the times of the shutdown. But we are seeing significantly sick people. As far as our supplies, just today, we received the supplies that we ordered at the end of February when we started to prepare for this. So we're starting to see our normal supply chain kind of come back to where we can at least get with the vendors that we're more familiar with and getting better pricing through. And we are seeing with the PPE supplies, we're doing well. There's still numerous medical supplies that we cannot get. And for one instance, just regular exam gloves, they don't expect to be back to their normal levels for purchase until the end of 2022. So we're trying to remedy that situation. We did immediately order large volumes as soon as this hits so that we do have plenty on hand right now. I'm just not sure that we have enough to last two years. We usually buy them every week, so switching to buying so far out in advance is hard. You know, I really encourage people to continue to take this seriously. Anyone that knows me knows that I've been taking this very seriously. And unfortunately, my family right now, it's good that I can remote them because we are under quarantine. We have some positive family members. One was just admitted to the hospital tonight from a graduation party. So I still, I urge everybody, keep your guard up. Wear your mask when you can't socially distance and just try to avoid large gatherings. I know this is a long-drawn-out thing. We're not really good at, I think, as Americans, at dealing things over the long haul. We do really well in that short run, but please keep your guards up and continue on. Are there any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hicksonbaugh. Thank you, Chief, for that update. First and foremost, our thoughts and prayers, or my thoughts and prayers are with you and your family. Hope everybody recovers well and safe. On the department side of things, how are our health and positive cases? Have we seen any spike or any positive cases since the initial one a few weeks ago?
Luckily, no, we have not. We do have at least one confirmed positive out right now, a new one towards the end of last week. And I think we got nervous that it would be in the firehouse again. And luckily, we have not had any of his contacts come, excuse me, come back positive. Unfortunately, his newborn child contracted it as well.
Well, thank you. And please extend our thoughts and prayers with that firefighter as well. And just want to take this time to thank you for your dedication and your leadership through this troubled time and keeping us all in your department safe. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mamalenti. Mr. Emmons?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Chief, for your work in updating us on the COVID situation. I have a question. On your runs, when you make a run, are the paramedics aware of whether they're going to a COVID or not? Or will you find out when you're there, or you find out later at the hospital?
That's a complicated question. At least, the question's not complicated, but the answer is, unfortunately. We are advised through dispatch when there's a suspicion that it could be a positive case. Unfortunately, the signs and symptoms of COVID vary so greatly. And there are such a large number of people that are asymptomatic. We've had a couple trauma cases where the patient ended up being COVID-positive. So, you know, if they've already been diagnosed, then I don't know of a case that we weren't advised. Unfortunately, it's 24, 48, sometimes 72 hours before I'm notified from the hospital that the patient does test positive. We do have a process for that. I personally take that phone call, I go back, and I speak with the people on the call to ensure that they did handle that call appropriately. And the men and women of the fire department are doing an outstanding job at that.
Well, thank you. Also, when you make a run, whether you know whether it's COVID or not, how long does it take you to sanitize each vehicle when they come back?
Altogether, we're talking 40, 45 minutes, somewhere in that range. Obviously, there can be times that are a little bit shorter and times that are a little bit longer. But that's still one of the, you know, the problems with this issue that's going on is that we don't know, so we have to treat all of them as if they are positive in going through that, the contamination process. If you recall, in the very beginning, we put out an order for a commercial device to do that. I think it was the week before last, they finally let me cancel it because they had no estimation of when they could ever deliver it or if they would ever be able to deliver it. So we were able to cancel that. The guys, you know, did some firefighter ingenuity and developed their own device, which does a good job at killing the virus. The problem is, it leaves a sticky film everywhere. So it's killing the virus, but actually causing more cleaning to have to be done. So we are trying to find a commercial device still that would help us and not leave the sticky residue behind to cause more issues in the future.
If we had all the ambulances down at one time for sanitizing, where we had to call an outside ambulance, did we have that problem?
I apologize. I'm confident that we have had that with the overlapping of calls. It's not something that I track, but I can try to do that for you in the future if you wish.
I appreciate that. I was just wondering, you know, if we've had our ambulances down to where we couldn't respond and we had to have outside ambulances because ours were down being sanitized due to the excessive runs.
Yeah, I would speculate that that has happened. But it's not something that we're tracking on whether there, you know, one is still on a call or if all three of them are in the sanitation phase at a time. But again, I'm sure with this busy, it's been over these last few weeks especially, it has happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmons. Mamalenti?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hicksonbaugh. Just to piggyback off of your earlier comment regarding the sanitation leaving the sticky residue, I was just curious, as a fact, and I don't expect you to know the answer to this, but do you suspect that it's the material that's being dispensed? Or is it the form of the way, or the way that it's being dispensed that's causing the sticky residue?
I believe it to be a combination of both. You know, it's a paint sprayer that we're using. It's not something that's truly atomizing like the commercial devices do. And it's not a product that was designed to do this. You know, we're just kind of ad-libbing. One reason that we chose the chemical is it was shown to kill the coronavirus. The other is, we already had a lot of it on hand. And, you know, as you know, those chemicals are very difficult to get our hands on.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Chief Thomas? Chief, I didn't know if that was a square. Chief, thank you again for the information, we appreciate it. I will say, you know, on at least a couple of the items of information that you share, the common theme appears to be the continuing inability at times for us to purchase a machine that would be important to us to have, you know, the PPE provided in the normal cycle that we would. But we appreciate the ingenuity of you and your firefighters with regard to working through those issues. If we could, I wanted to have you talk for a couple of minutes about what was recently communicated to the council, which is, as part of your work on the city's Coronavirus Task Force, the provisions that we've put in place here in City Hall to keep our employees safe as they are providing ongoing service to the public. It really goes beyond, you know, the minimum that's been recommended with regard to the wearing of masks within governmental buildings. So can you talk about what we're doing to keep our employees safe with regard to wearing masks as they are providing those public services?
Yeah. It's really not all that much different than what we're asking everybody out there to do. You know, it's washing hands, it's the social distancing is key. And then, wearing the mask, I know that it's controversial. And I could tell you, in the beginning, I wasn't quote-unquote a believer in the wearing of masks. But the science is slowly coming behind to showing that it's not just preventing you from exposing other people, but it is actually protecting you from others as well. So at City Hall, we elected to any interaction with the public for the city employee to have the mask on. We just think it takes away any chance of, you know, as people are talking and they're kind of, you know, pacing around and that anybody could get so close. We put up the plexiglass, which is great, as long as everybody is standing exactly where they're supposed to stand. You know, we're asking the public to wear a mask when they enter. We will offer them one if they don't have it. And we're just, we're wanting the city employees to wear the mask as well to keep themselves and the public as safe as possible.
Thank you again. If you would pass that along to the rest of the task force. I'm sure we all appreciate the fact that you take our, all issues related to public health and safety serious, including those that are directly related to our employees.
those that are directly related to our employees. So thank you for the work that you're doing in that capacity as well. Other questions and comments for Chief Thomas? All right, thank you, sir. We appreciate your participation this evening.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Mr. Compton?
For me, maybe for Mr. Prince, with the mayor not being able to be here tonight, do we know of any other city employees that have tested positive other than police and, or other than firemen? Are you aware of any?
Yes, I do not know the details, but I know there was a positive case in wastewater.
Okay.
In addition to that, I believe that person has recovered, but I'd lose track of that as well. The most recent case was the fire that, this is from Chief Thomas' mention.
Very good. And if you would, I'm quick to let the mayor know I'm not happy about different things, and I wanted him to know that I was pleased to see the decision of the task force to require masks in the hall, in the city hall and city buildings, as he's done. I know other people, Mr. Emmons, has requested the mayor do that directly, and I just wanted him to know that I appreciate that and have that on the record. If you'd make sure he hears that, I'd appreciate that.
We'll pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Deputy Mayor Prince? Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Mr. Prince, would you make sure that we get staff reports for all of the verences and resolutions that Abby read about today?
You should, so...
They're not in there.
They're not with...
Well, they wouldn't be in there for first reading, so they haven't gone before the, you would not receive them until after they go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So I just want to make sure I can get them.
What happens is, they file the petitions and the appeals, and they come to you first. I read them to you, and I send them back to the planning department.
Right, I'm just saying that I want, I'm just asking to make sure...
Okay, because I didn't know there were any missing.
I just know in terms of process, we are, tonight's agenda was all reading and first reading, so you wouldn't normally...
I understand that, I'm saying for the next...
Right, 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 right.
Second reading, I just want to make sure they're in there. That's what I'm saying.
Well, then, this was just first, this was not, this wasn't even first reading.
This was still...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Based on our normal, based on our normal protocol, you should be getting staff reports.
Yeah, this was just the petitions and appeals that I read. They have not come to us in first reading yet.
Thank you. When it's time.
Right, but I understand the resolutions obviously don't have a first reading, they don't have a resolution, so...
Appeals will come to you, the resolution will come with the staff report.
Okay.
And the recommendation, which I'll read to you the night of the resolution.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mrs. Volker. Mr. Compton?
This is for you, Mr. Prince, but thank you, I appreciate that. This is more for the council, staying on the topic of COVID. I mentioned this before the meeting. I received an email from William Crozier from the White House inviting for a invitation to listen to in on the COVID update from the White House. Dr. Burks, Secretary Azar, Administrative Cima Verma, and Rear Admiral, and I'm not going to try to pronounce it, from FEMA, are going to talk. This is that, this, it's August 5th, so it's Thursday. So if you're interested, search your emails and see if you can find it. Why I got it, I don't, I don't know. I look back, I do get emails from them occasionally.
So you sent that on...
And I forwarded back to you.
And I will share it with everyone.
Mr. Compton, my suspicion is that you are on several lists at the White House that none of us are aware of.
Well, it might be, but...
Thank you for sharing that.
Some I don't want to be on.
I understand. Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you again. Is there any other new business to come before the council? If not, then before we close, I will once again remind the public that the council has instituted changes in the way in which we conduct our meetings during the current public health emergency. These changes are consistent with the terms of multiple executive orders issued by Governor Holcomb, as well as related legal guidance. It is anticipated that the council's normal meeting procedures will be reinstituted at the conclusion of the public health emergency. In the meantime, physical attendance at council meetings will continue to be restricted in accordance with relevant guidance related to limitations on public gatherings and social distancing. During the public health emergency, council members, as well as members of the public and media, will continue to be afforded the opportunity to remotely access council meetings and recordings of the council meetings, if applicable, and the meetings, and the minutes of the meetings will also be made available to the public and the meeting media as soon as is possible. Once again, we thank everybody for their patience as we work through this, and if there is no other business to come before the council, most to adjourn is an order. We are adjourned, thank you.